Pledge with Mr. Ryder.
So, we have extra things to celebrate this holiday season, especially if your direct family or loved ones are not touched by cancer. I know that many of our EPS families are going through some things at this time of year. It's even harder because you might miss Thanksgiving and/or miss Christmas or New Year's with your family because you're at CCMC fighting cancer in your PJs. And it's for this reason and more that Enfield Public Schools, for the seventh year in a row as a team, will be raising money for CCMC this Friday, December 13th. So, I want to take a moment of silence and send some positive vibes to our EPS families, students, or staff who have family members that will be at CCMC or fighting other illnesses this holiday season, and may we all be blessed to not have that, but if we are, please send them your thoughts. Now, the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a true public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Fire evacuation announcement. In the unlikely event of a fire, you can exit out the back doors and out to the parking lot, or you can exit out the side doors of the chambers. Go take your first left down the stairs and out to the parking lot. But just know if you go out to the parking lot that way, you probably won't be able to get back in because the door is locked. Anyways, Kathy, roll call, please.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Mrs. Akri?
Here.
Dr. Kalman?
Here.
Mrs. Cushman?
Here.
Mr. Genitis?
Here.
Mr. Coburn?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. Pickett?
Here.
Chairwoman Riley?
Here.
Okay, so tonight, board guests, the first board guests we have are the lovely ladies for Wreaths Across America. So, if we can have Lori Gates and Pam Townsend come on up, that would be great.
Making sure it's on.
They know all this already.
I know, I know. Chairwoman Riley, Board of Education members, Superintendent Macchio. Long he's not here, I thought he was here. Well.
He's still in class. He's coming.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk about the Wreaths Across America mission tonight. I'm Pam Townsend, and this is Lori Gates. And together, we along with many other volunteers make the mission successful. The Wreaths Across America mission has three pillars: Remember, Honor, and Teach. This important mission has been bestowed upon us, a core value goal of remembering those who sacrificed so much for the rest of us, honoring our nation's military and families, and teaching our children the importance of and respect for and value of both remembering and honoring. On Saturday, December 14th, Enfield's Wreaths Across America ceremony will be held at St. Patrick Cemetery located at 1558 Enfield Street. The ceremony begins at 12 noon. After the ceremony, veteran wreaths are placed throughout the cemetery. Enfield's ceremony supports all three pillars, but with a focus on remembering and honoring Enfield's heroes. We invite the public to attend the ceremony and help complete our mission by placing wreaths on Saturday. Lori is here to talk about our third pillar, Teach, and how our mission is moved.
It would be me. So, originally, I was going to tell everybody that our convoy was stopping by tomorrow, but because of the hazardous weather we're going to get, we'd rather see them get safely to Arlington and for our kids to be safe and not have tree limbs falling on them potentially. So, we're going to let them hit the road tomorrow and head down to Arlington. I think that's safest for everybody. Mr. Macchio is in agreement, as is Enfield Police Department. So, we're going to skip that this year. But we did want to talk for a few minutes about teaching our children and why the... We keep using the word "mission" on purpose. You know, it's a duty. It's our honor to do this for the veterans, but it really is a duty because children specifically are messengers we're going to send to a time we're not going to see. So, what message do we want to send with them? And we need to teach them how to respect and honor the people that have sacrificed so much for the rest of us. Some have sacrificed their entire lives, some have sacrificed family time. It's important that our kids know how to say thank you, how to value that, how to understand what the cost of freedom is. And that's what Wreaths Across America teaches them. Seeing that convoy is exciting for them. It's bells and whistles and, oh, it's a Walmart truck, you hear often. But what the teachers in our school system teach them is that that's not a Walmart truck. Those are wreaths that are made from 10 bouquets from trees that are tipped every three years that have service members' dog tags hanging on them, that are then created with the 10 tenets of what a wreath is made from and how to make that into a veteran's wreath. And then it gets traveled to the different cemeteries. And so, all these videos and these teaching packets that they can access on the website give them teachable moments so they become more than that's just a wreath made of greens and a red bow. There's so much more to this program than just a wreath on a Walmart truck that is headed somewhere that the kids don't see. It's nice to bring them into the local cemeteries also so they can see it. While we are standing there on Saturday reading the names of our towns killed in action, all these cemeteries, 4,200 and change?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine hundred cemeteries are doing the same thing. They're all held at noon Eastern Standard Time. So, while we are saying the names of our war dead here in Enfield, they're saying them in Texas. California is reading theirs. All at the same time, all those names are being lifted together. It's one of the only times as a country, we're all doing the exact same thing for the same purpose, the same reason. It gives me chills to say that, and we get to all be a part of that. That's a really big thing. So, we start teaching our children young how you can do that. It makes a huge impact on them. So, this program has ripples to it. Moving the mission, we get Walmart trucks because we had five trucks that were coming here from Walmart. There are 27 trucking industry, I think, they donate their trucks. Now, different companies do it differently. Walmart does it where they pick their driver of the year. They give out who has the most safety miles, who's driven the most miles safely, as opposed to the... They have their own categories. They pick veterans. I had all five. One gentleman that was going to be driving for here, driven for 26 years with 2.5 million safe miles with Walmart, was a veteran in both Operation Desert Shield and Desert Storm for the Marine Corps. Driver of the year out of Lewiston, Maine. We had somebody from Pennsylvania with a son who's a disabled veteran from the Air Force. Her brother was an Air Force veteran, another brother retired from the Army. That one is going to Shanksville, Pennsylvania to the 9/11 crash site. Their faces, they're people. They're not trucks anymore. And it's the same thing with the wreaths. When you go place your wreath and you say the name of the person where you're placing it, now it's a person. It's no longer just a Walmart truck, it's no longer just a wreath. And it wouldn't get there without all of these trucking companies donating their drivers, their fuel, their truck, and they all have that same mission. And you talk to these drivers, and they're in tears saying, "I get to do this." This is not a job. Somebody goes, "Oh, I won't be home for another week because I got to go take this wherever." This is their goal throughout the year to be chosen for this. It's an honor. So, what an honor it is for Enfield to be chosen almost every year. This would have been year nine that they come here. We're doing something right here, and they're coming back time after time. And so, thank you, everybody who's watching, thank you, because they're coming back because of what everybody else does here. We get it, you know? We're doing it right, they're doing it right. And thank you to everybody from me, I'll speak for you from you two, because... Because we really are teaching each other. It's our kids, yes, but we're teaching each other. You know, we're saying, "Come down." I tell people all the time, "Come to the cemetery. If you see it once, it'll change you." And then the next person says, "Yeah, you know, I never knew what it was, but I went." And now, they tell the next person. So, I would encourage everybody to come down. Pam does an amazing job. How many wreaths you got this year? I know you know it.
We reached our second goal. I always said I have... My primary goal is to place a wreath on all 5,000 veterans laid to rest here in Enfield. When I took over seven years ago, this is year seven for me, we were only working in St. Pat's Cemetery, and I had just under 400 wreaths. So, the past three years, we were doing 100% at St. Pat's. This year, we've reached 2,539 wreaths. So, today, we received an early shipment of wreaths. So, if you go into one of the cemeteries or you go to any of the monuments, some of the monuments, not all of them, you'll see a veteran wreath placed. The... My husband and I, I felt like the wreath elf running around town with boxes of wreaths and placing these wreaths on the monuments and in some of the smaller cemeteries, we placed them. So, but, yep, we have 204 more boxes coming in tomorrow. So, offloading, so, yeah, it's pretty exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. That's awesome.
Does anybody have any questions? Anything I missed?
Anybody? Go ahead, Mr. Ryder.
Just a quick question, and I know this is anecdotal, but I believe you told me a couple of years ago that, you know, they try to share this with other towns. You know, they try to see, "Oh, well, Enfield was great. What about the next town over?" And they had never actually gone to the same town more than maybe, say, three times ever. And you said this would have been their ninth?
It would have been our ninth year here.
Just in Enfield. So, I know that you're thanking us and our staff and our students and their school spirit, and that's what the drivers love to see, but I wanted to thank the both of you again because without you guys, this wouldn't come together. The kids wouldn't be outside waiting for them and enjoying this or have these opportunities. So, I just wanted to say thank you.
Oh, I just thought of one more thing. If anyone, teacher, home, otherwise, has any pictures, posters, signs, well wishes for our drivers that they intended to show, send them to me because I can text them to them, and they can get them while they're on the road headed down to Arlington. I'll make sure that they get them.
Very cool.
Okay, so I'm happy to share those. They love them.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Genitis. And then Tina, you'll be next, because I can see your hand up.
I'd like to thank the post that you made on social media there showing the wreaths coming out of Maine and everything. If anybody hasn't seen it, I suggest that you look it up and watch it. It's pretty interesting. And I'd like to thank you two personally for all the tireless work you do, not only on this, but all the other things in this community. You two are little angels or elves.
Thank you, Peter. All right, Tina? Tina, you're on mute.
Yeah, I can hear you.
You said Tina.
Yeah, she's on the screen. She's not on mute, though. I can hear, I can read her lips, but it's not working. Do we have the volume turned up in here?
Lori, Lori, after Tina does talk, could you give everybody your Enfield Schools email address for the pictures?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're having technical difficulties.
Hi, Tina.
If she logs off and logs back on, will that maybe work?
I know I joined the meeting virtually from my phone. I can hear myself, so, in both ways, so.
And we heard her, we tested it.
Yeah, we heard it before. Tina, you want to log back off and log back on? Maybe that'll reset you and it'll get somebody else? Okay, thanks. All right.
I wanted to also thank you both. The work that you do isn't just this event. I know how much you do in our community for our military, for our veterans, and that is deeply appreciated. Even from out-of-town folks, I know I emailed you, Pam. My parents don't live in Enfield, and my dad will always say he feels very honored here in Enfield. And I appreciate that, and it matters. I also think what you demonstrated through kind of the teaching you did here tonight is unity, regardless of circumstance, the fact that like the tradition of noon, the reading of the names, I think the power of that is really impactful. So, I wanted to thank you both. I encourage folks to send pictures and continue the work. And also, there's plenty of opportunities to honor our veterans and our military in town, so be paying attention because it's in multiple ways. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Kalman?
Thank you very much for what you're doing. This is a great tradition that you started. You know, we're living in such a divisive country these days. It's such a splintered country, and this is one of those very rare occasions when we can all get together. And I think this is a very healing, very binding experience, a very positive experience for the country. So, thank you so much.
All right, Tina, want to give it another shot?
Sir, can you hear me now?
Yeah, all right.
To Ms. Townsend and Ms. Gates, I just want to formally thank you as a Board of Ed member. I will not be sitting up at the dais next year as I'm going to be retiring, but I just want to commend you for all the work you've done for Enfield Public Schools on the education portion of it. And I had the honor of riding in the convoy last year, and it's a life-changing experience. And I appreciate having that opportunity and seeing the veterans. And one thing I can say about veterans is they're some of the most humble people I will ever meet in my life. But because, Pam, you got a little choked up because we are increasing the amount of wreaths, I think that this is a direct effect of the education and advocacy that you and Lori bring to Enfield. So, I just want to say thank you to you both and have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tina. Mr. Coburn?
All right, I want to echo the thanks to both of you for all you guys do for Wreaths Across America. Obviously, like everybody else, I'm a little disappointed we won't be able to see the convoy. I know I got to witness it last year, and just seeing the kids come out of the school and observe it, it was awesome, and it definitely... You could talk about something, but seeing it is a whole different experience. I think the lesson and, like you said, the mission, the theme, the remember, honor, teach, I think is still an important component. And maybe without the convoy, you know, whether it's in the classroom or at home in the community, if we can find a way to still incorporate that. And, you know, I know we had Veterans Day, some of the schools did assemblies, stuff like that. You know, this is another opportunity, you know, for families, you know, they can't make it out Saturday, but maybe still have that conversation, like, hey, we're not seeing the convoy, but, you know, this is something that we offer, and this is why we offer it and kind of explain it and everything. So, you know, I'm glad that it's still happening. You know, we still have the ceremony on Saturday, and, you know, look forward to supporting you guys.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, I just want to say, obviously, what everybody else said, is just thank you. You guys do this and so much more in our community, and I can't thank you enough for that. And just to shout out for you guys on Saturday, because it is an amazing ceremony to witness. It is truly an honoring of the people of Enfield that have been killed in war, and it's a very moving ceremony. There's a lot of, you know, scouts at it, and when everybody can lay wreaths afterwards, it's a really great thing to witness. And so, if you have nothing to do on Saturday, definitely please go because it's definitely an experience to not forget. And it is at noon on Saturday at St. Patrick's. Yep, cemetery.
I think I can speak for both of us. It's an honor to be able to do something, to try to say thank you for the people that risked so much for us.
And Lori, where should they send pictures to?
Mr. Macchio, can I use my work email? LGates@enfieldschools.org.
Okay, LGates@enfieldschools.org.
And if anybody's looking for information on the Teach portion of Wreaths Across America, wreathsacrossamerica.org, they do have a Teach tab. And there's lots of information on there that you can download and use.
All right.
Yes, per grade level, so, if it's appropriate for the age.
Well, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
And have a wonderful holiday.
You too. Thank you. You too.
All right, so Board Guest B is School and State Finance Project. Mr. Macchio, who do we have with us this evening?
Well, I welcome tonight. We were to have Lisa Hammersley, the head of the School and State Finance Project. Unfortunately, she had some family obligations that have come up. So, she was nice enough to voluntold Erica Haynes to come on out and do the presentation for us. Erica is the Director of Community Engagement for the School and State Finance Project. And Erica is going to... She has a PowerPoint presentation that you'll be able to follow along with. And then I also have it, so I'll also include it in your weekly update. In case you missed anything, you can go back and reference it again. But she's going to take us through sort of the historical Enfield education spending and the overall process related to ECS and how all of that works for Enfield. And then she'll wrap us up with some information related to Alliance Districts and give you some historical context related to that. So, Erica, hopefully I didn't set the bar too high for you, but we thank you for coming out this evening and sharing the information.
Thank you. Good evening. All right, so tonight, as the superintendent said, we're going to start with how Connecticut funds education and then move into the Alliance District program. You have my contact information there. If anyone has any questions, welcome to reach out to us. I will point out, we also have an app where you can identify school funding performance by district, by school, and even compare. So, it's a great handy thing to have. A little bit about us as an organization. We started in 2015, really focused on working to get equitable funding for all of Connecticut's public school students. We're a nonprofit, nonpartisan policy organization, and we work collaboratively with all stakeholders on solutions to funding challenges. So, we're going to just start with what the funding sources are for K-12 education in Connecticut. And really, you have three buckets, and I'll start at the top. First of all, in Connecticut, we're spending about $13.3 billion annually on K-12 education. Of that, right now, from the federal government, that number is a little over $1 billion. It's about 8%. That does include the money from Essar COVID Relief Dollars. Typically, that number is between 4.2% and 4.4%, so we'll see that drop as those dollars go away. That large green bar at the bottom, that's local sources. So, that's 169 cities and towns deciding what to invest in education in their community. And the 4.7 billion in orange, those are state dollars that are supporting K-12 education. So, when we look at Enfield in particular, and we look comparing Enfield to other districts, the first thing to know is that Enfield currently spends nearly $3,000 less per student than the state average. And the average is $21,143. And what you're looking at here is a comparison across similar communities. So, here we're looking at Enfield, Windsor Locks, East Windsor, and Vernon. And those dollars are still color-coded in that same way, with the green dollars being the local dollars, orange being state dollars, the blue being federal dollars, and then you'll see a pink bar that is for tuition and other grants. And when you look across these districts, you look at comparing apples to apples, and we look at that in a couple of ways that are connected to funding in Connecticut. So, the first is looking at the number of students who are identified as low-income in your school district. Those are students who qualify for free and reduced-price lunch. In Enfield, that number is 46.1%, and you can go across and see Windsor Locks at roughly 44, East Windsor at 52, and Vernon at 52. The second is multilingual learners. And in Enfield, there's about 3%, 3.2% of the student population. Windsor Locks at about double that, 6.8%, East Windsor, 6.7, and Vernon at 3.8. And then you have students with disabilities. And across that range, in Enfield, 18.8%, you see very similar across. And at the very bottom, you see BIOPAC students, those who are identified as Black, Indigenous, Latino, or people of color, at 37% in Enfield, and slightly larger in the comparative districts. So, we need to talk first about how the dollars come to you from the state. And so, we use in Connecticut the Education Cost Sharing, or ECS, formula to distribute state education dollars to municipalities for local or regional public school districts. Why does Connecticut have this formula? This formula is the result of a 1977 lawsuit. So, it goes back to 1977 in a case called Horton versus Meskell. And the determination of the court was that a system that allows property wealthy towns to spend more on education with less effort impedes children's constitutional rights to an equal education. And essentially, this is a case about equity and the role of the state in equitizing education across the state and education funding. So, the ECS grant, in theory, is supposed to make up the difference between what a community can afford to pay and what it costs to educate their students or to run a public school system for their students. In order to do that, we need to start with how much does it cost to educate children in any given community? And to do that, the state starts first with what is called the foundation amount. This is the amount that it would cost to educate a child who has no additional learning needs. In Connecticut, it's established by the legislature. That amount is right now at $11,525, and it hasn't been adjusted since 2013. So, this is not something that moves with a cost of living adjustment. But if you think about a classroom of 25 children who had no additional learning needs, the assumption here is that the $11,525 would fund all of their needs wholly. The ECS formula is a weighted student funding formula, which means that it looks at the needs of children, and we know that children are coming into our schools with all sorts of additional learning needs and understanding that additional learning needs require additional resources. And so, the formula right now looks at that in a couple of ways. And the first thing they do is identify students who are considered economically disadvantaged, students who qualify for free or reduced-price lunch. And the weight attached to additional needs for these students is 30% above the $11,525. If a district has more than 60% of its students who qualify for free and reduced-price lunch, there's an additional 15% weight for the number of students above that 60% threshold. And finally, multilingual learners who are both learning content mastery, subject mastery, and additional language mastery, and that weight is 25%. So, when you look at what this means, these weights are not an either-or. So, they can be combined. So, when you're looking at a child who may qualify for free or reduced-price lunch, the dollars then change from $11,525 to nearly $15,000. And so, you can see in this how money matters in resourcing the district to meet the needs of the students who are attending the school. That number, and we will look at this in a second, what that tallies up to for Enfield, right? The cost to run a public school system by this formula. And remember, there are two parts to this formula. The cost in totality to educate the students in Enfield, and then how much Enfield can afford to pay. And so, what the state looks at are two factors. The first is property wealth. How much can you raise in property taxes, given your equalized net grand list per capita? How much taxable property do you have per person? And the second part of this is an income wealth factor, median household income. And the second part of this is an income wealth factor, median household income. Essentially, how much can people in your community afford to pay in property taxes? So they look at that, and then additionally, the formula provides additional funding to the 19 communities with the lowest wealth and highest need. And additional points are added to that base aid ratio to drive resources to the 19 neediest communities. So it's important to know that ECS fluctuates year to year based on all of the changing data. And so there are projections, and those projections can change. It's important to note that because ECS will actually be fully funded next school year. But when you're looking at this, this is the list of all of the factors that are recalculated every year. So for instance, a town can go through revow, and it's not usually thought of as how that can impact you all in the public school system, but it is part of the base aid ratio, and it does affect your education cost-sharing grant. And so this is calculated every year. So let's look, and you're all going to probably squint a little bit at this, just like me, but there are these two pieces of this. First, that calculation that I told you they're going to do to figure out how much it costs to educate the kids in Enfield. And essentially, based on the state ECS formula, and I want to be very clear, this is not what your budget is going to look like, right? This is based on their numbers. But according to the ECS formula, it would cost about $66 million, $66.2 million, to educate kids in Enfield. And then they look at the base aid ratio, and I will tell you that, we said there are additional points for the 19 most struggling communities. Enfield is number 32, so there's not additional points there. But the state calculation is that you will need nearly 44%, 43.89% support of that $66 million, right? That the state should provide about 44% of that. So that, in total, the ECS grant would be a little over $29 million coming into Enfield to support education. So when we look at the ECS phase-in for Enfield, and this is important, you're seeing a flat line, right? This isn't growing. The formula first was passed in 2017. And I think it's really important to anchor in a little bit of history in the ECS, in that the state, since 1977, the result of the lawsuit, the reason we have education cost-sharing, the state has implemented some sort of ECS formula time and time again. And it's always attached to a phase-in period, and the state has never made it through a full phase-in of education cost-sharing. Usually, somewhere in the middle, they say, "It got too expensive. We can't afford it, and we're going to fund this in block grants." So for a period of time before this current ECS formula was passed, all districts were getting block grants that were not connected to the number of students, the needs of the students. They were just based on, historically, what did you get? So when they pass this new formula, suddenly, they really have to look, after a period of years, they have to look at who's in the schools and all of these factors. And when they do that, they realize there are towns that are overfunded according to the formula, and there are towns that are underfunded according to the formula. Towns that are overfunded would be phased out over a period of time. Towns that were underfunded would be phased in over a period of time. What has happened during this current iteration of the formula is that towns that were intended to be phased out, they've delayed the phase-out period and extended it several times. Enfield was slated to be a phase-out community. And it wasn't a large amount of money, but it was a phase-out. But you'll notice that it's not now. And that is related to two things. First is those hold harmlessness, but second is the Alliance District Program. So I want to move us into that. The Alliance District Program, and the history of the Alliance District Program, it was created in 2012. And it was to identify the 30 lowest-performing districts. In 2015, Every Student Succeeds Act was signed into law, and it required some of this accountability that included Alliance Districts in Connecticut's federal plan required by the Every Student Succeeds Act. So in 2017, the Alliance District Program was not only reauthorized for five years, but it was expanded from the 30 lowest-performing districts to the 33 lowest. Most recently, in 2022, it was expanded to 36 districts. And I do want you to know, when we talk about the lowest-performing districts, this isn't a number that you hit or don't hit, right? This is all relative to how other districts are performing or not performing. So there isn't a certain accountability score that moves you into or out of this program. It is simply as districts are moving through accountability and ranking differently. So they've expanded this program now to 36. So an Alliance District is identified as one of the 33 lowest-performing districts, and there are 36 because the three additional are holdovers. But it's according to the Next Generation Accountability System, or a previous designation of an Alliance District. Next Generation Accountability System has 12 indicators that are intended to show how well a district is preparing its students for success. And Alliance Districts are identified through that relative score. And an Alliance District that is identified as an Alliance District holds that designation for five years. And there are a few caveats as well. So not only is it relative, right, but districts with under 1,000 students don't qualify for the Alliance District Program. They can also not be a technical high school, an endowed academy, a public charter school, a regional education service center, or a unified school district. So there are a lot of exclusions on the program. It must be one of the 33 lowest-performing based on the Accountability Index, or a district that was designated as an Alliance District between 2013 and 2017. So as I said, there's a lot of metrics here to the Next Generation Accountability System that go into this. And it includes everything from participation rate in your state test, chronic absenteeism, physical fitness. My son came home and was shocked that his physical fitness matters, and we could talk about how much it matters, right? But all of this, including arts access, goes into this accountability score. So what's required once you're identified as an Alliance District? Once a district becomes an Alliance District, the district is required to complete an Alliance District Plan to the Commissioner of the State Department of Education. And you are statutorily required to make progress in the areas identified in your Alliance District Plan. So we talk about Alliance District Funds, and there's a huge list of things that the funds can be used for. And when you look, they're very targeted, and they're identified for interventions. They're targeted and yet broad. And we can take just the broad description of a tiered system of interventions, or a training for school leaders, coordination with early childhood education providers. There are a lot of pieces of education, broadly speaking, that go into an Alliance District Plan and the eligible use of funds. And the important thing here is those Alliance District Funds are not a new revenue source. So we talk about Alliance District Funds, and it is probably the biggest misunderstanding around the program, because you suddenly have accountability for Alliance District Funds. And essentially, Alliance District Funds are a part of your ECS. So there's no additional money. It's a portion of your ECS. And it depends on, when you were designated, as to whether it is a portion of your ECS funds that is above and beyond the amount you received in ECS in 2012 or in 2022. So depending on when you were designated, if you were designated as an Alliance District in 2017, currently, anything that you would have gotten in an increase in education cost-sharing above the 2012 amount is your Alliance District Funds. Those funds are held by the state until you complete your Alliance District Plan and get approval from the state. And those ECS funds now have the restrictions of the Alliance District Program on them. But they aren't additional funds. There's just a new hoop that you have to jump through in order to access those funds. And they are withheld until the plan is approved. And then they are directly transferred to the Board of Education. So ECS typically flows first to the town or city, so to Enfield Town Hall, essentially. And then those funds are moved to the Board of Education. Alliance District Funds are withheld until your plan is approved, and then they are released directly to the Board of Education. So the question is, what's the financial benefit? I've just told you that these aren't additional dollars that you're getting for becoming an Alliance District. No district is getting additional funds. And I've told you that you actually have to do more paperwork in order to get those dollars. The benefits of being an Alliance District are, first and foremost, there's a minimum aid ratio of 10%. So I told you, your ECS share that the state pays is about 44%. I think it was 43.89%. Some districts in the Alliance Program have under 10% of their education that would be paid for by the state. The Alliance District minimum contribution from the state is 10%. The second is a hold harmless, which means that you aren't going to lose funds to the greater of the district's 2017 ECS grant amount, the prior-year grant amount or the current-year grant amount. Essentially, in ECS terms, Enfield ultimately would have been a phase-out town. In the Alliance District Program, there is no phase-out for you. You are held harmless for that loss, so you don't experience that loss. And additionally, there is occasionally eligibility for priority in some grant programs that the state will offer. So then how does this impact you all in Enfield? If we were to look at the current inputs of the ECS formula, your fully-funded ECS grant amount is $29,729,010. Because you are being held harmless, the difference between the amount you should be funded according to formula and the hold harmless because of the Alliance Program is about $750,735. Three-quarters of a million dollars is not getting phased out because of the Alliance District Program and the hold harmless provision benefit. So if the ECS formula inputs for Enfield change, right, they're calculating all of those inputs every year. If you saw an increase in the number of multilingual learners, the number of students who qualify for free and reduced-price lunch, to the point that your ECS grant would exceed the current hold harmless amount, that those dollars would be designated as Alliance District funding, and you would be accountable for doing an Alliance District Grant Report, Proposal for how you were going to spend those funds. And those would be Alliance District Funds. Essentially, you all sit in this very interesting spot where you're benefiting from the hold harmless without doing the paperwork or having funds withheld until you do the paperwork. And the additional benefit of not just paperwork, but restrictions on how you would spend those dollars aren't attached to what you have right now. It just kind of worked out in a way that I doubt they probably anticipated, but has a lot of benefits. That is all I have. So I'm welcome to, I'm open to all the questions you may have.
Perfect. Thank you first so much. I'm really excited that you're here. I have been asking, actually, for you to come as a guest for quite some time. I think understanding funding structures are really critical. Again, I hope that our town council does get a copy of this and watches this. Actually, I'm going to encourage our leadership when you have your joint meetings that they receive this and watch it. My wonder, so when you talk about the hold harmless and how the formula has changed for Enfield, can you describe what that means for districts who are, like, getting phased out and how that's impacting those communities? Because from my understanding, a community cannot decrease the amount that they fund education. So are communities having to make up the money that used to be ECS? Or like, what is the impact on that?
Sure. So if you're a community that's being phased out and you're losing state dollars, the requirement is not that the municipality backfill that. There is a problem, though, right, that the municipality is faced with, in that dollars that were being utilized to support student learning needs are being reduced. And then a Board of Education is faced with asking for additional dollars from the municipality or having to adjust service provision. But there is no mandate that the municipality backfill state dollars that are being lost.
Awesome. So...
So that's not part of the MBR fund?
So the MBR requires that a municipality not decrease the money that they have been providing, but it's separate from the state provision.
Okay. Perfect. And then the only other thing that I would just say is I appreciated that your presentation had some local comparisons. I think it's often we talk about, like, oh, we're not some other communities, but it's really interesting to think about how we fund our education compared to local communities that are much like Enfield.
And I do think it's important to that point. There are a lot of times that we think we're like some other communities, and apples-to-apples comparisons, or at least awarenesses of where those differences are, is really crucial.
Dr. Kalman.
Just a very basic question. Why is it that ECS funds... Why is it that ECS funds go directly to the town hall rather than to the Board of Education?
So in Connecticut, we have fiscally dependent school districts. So the structure is such that, that because you are fiscally dependent, the flow is through the city first.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else, any other questions?
I do, but I was going to wait.
I had, I had a question. If that's okay. So, and I know you said that when you went back, if you go back to the slides, on the slide that talked about how much the state says you're supposed to be spending per pupil, when it came up. There was a form, the ECS formula.
Yep.
Said that in Enfield, it was supposed to be 66 million.
Oh, the total budget.
Right. So I know that you had prefaced before you talked about that slide, that this isn't really your ECS. So is that just like an example or?
No, it's your ECS, but it's not going to match your, your district budget. And there's a really critical reason for it. You'll notice, and you will notice in, in the entire formula, there is no mention of special education. So the formula articulates exactly why you are getting the, the dollars, right? The calculation based on student need. But the state then attributes about 20% of that as also their support for special education. So it, it's baked in there based on some choices the legislature made in 1995. So when you're looking at the state saying, well, this is going to be your, you know, this is about how much it should cost to educate kids in Enfield, that number is most likely going to be significantly lower than what you are experiencing because of that lack of, of accountability for special education costs.
Okay. That was one part I was like, but why? Okay. It makes sense now. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
What I needed to hear. Thank you.
Erica, could I just also jump in? I think also important in that, not as important as that piece with special education is, and I know Erica mentioned this, the foundation level, the dollar amount that they multiply everything by, has not changed since 2013.
Correct.
Think about what it cost you for just everyday goods in 2013 versus what it costs us today. So that does also factor in.
And I, I will add to that, right? That, that behind these, these are, these, these funding decisions are funding decisions set by the legislature. So they are political. There, there is no, no academic information that supports that foundation amount, right? So.
That's frustrating.
So there is, there is a, a level of, you know, what does it look like? Now, when we look across the 50 states and, and when you account for some of the variations, looking, you know, the last time we looked, we fell into the lower second quartile across the 50 states as far as a foundation amount. And, and so I think, I think it just is important to note, when these are politically set, they're politically set based on, on available funding and, and ability to, to, to do this. So they are, for lack of a better word, fairly arbitrary.
Right. Go ahead, Mr. Genoys. And then you can go next, Tina.
Okay. I know you're the messenger, so I'm not going to shoot the messenger.
Thank you.
Years ago, Connecticut ranked first or second in the country in education. Do you know where we rank now?
I do not.
You don't? I don't think it's anywhere near there anymore. Even Mass is past this. I am so extremely frustrated that the funding that you give us, for every new law that you pass, for every new unfunded mandate you pass, puts excessive stress on the local town, the smaller towns, or towns that aren't well off, put it that way. And that's, that's just insane by the state. And you're, you're mentioning it, it's political. Well, it's time that maybe the politicians got the hell out of education, or mostly out of education, and let the towns do what is best for themselves. You say you, you try to make it so all the towns have an equal education. That's malarkey. You may try, but that's not even close. You know that. I know that. There are so many communities that are needing, are so far above our town, and there are some below our town, but for the most part, we're, we're in the way on the bottom half. You look at the town's average income and special needs students, and that has something to do with the ranking. And you compared us to a few, a couple towns around here. How does Enfield compare to those towns as far as their ability to pay their average income in the town and stuff like that?
We can gather that data for you if you'd like.
Peter just.
Last night, so no. And the other part, just in, Erica is, is from a private organization, not from the State Department of Education.
Not even close to the State Department.
She's an, she's an ally when it comes to us understanding the funding sources. Many of the questions you have are the same questions that I'm sure Charlotte and I are going to be going down to the state capitol and, and going through public hearings on. But.
I think, I, I don't think those aren't questions that we ask as well as.
Don't ask or do ask?
No, that we ask. These are, these are not things that we aren't aware of and, and have concerns about, but we are just a nonprofit organization trying to build knowledge and help people advocate for change.
Well, as a messenger then, take some of this stuff back and put them in a room. Jeez. These formulas that the state comes up with, and, and they're constantly changing it. It's insane. Does any of the money that we get from the state go towards salaries?
Did you say what I think you said? Our termination?
Yeah. So the state sends money to the town to help fund us, and it's how we determine we will utilize the town's appropriation. So we will utilize the town's appropriation for the budget to obviously go towards salaries, benefits and everything else that comprises the educational budget.
Okay. So technically then, with the, the large number of administrators that we had and the, a lot of the money on the last contract going to the upper steps rather than the lower and middle steps, that's money that isn't really going into the classroom. It's not, I mean, you're paying for the services of the teacher and everything and their experience and stuff like that. I understand that. But when it's, we're talking about the cost of education, what are we putting actually into the classrooms? Now, we just let go, what, 126 or 129 personnel? I think 40 or 50 were teachers. That affects the classroom. And the way I see it, the state's not stepping in and, and really helping out the, the needs of the town. Why did we have to let so many people go? There were a number of, a multitude of reasons, but it still comes down to money. And get the message to the state to get their act together, please. I like the fact you made the state, the statement, the state can say they can't afford all the money, so we've gone into block grants? What the hell they think we're doing? I mean, they got more money than we have. And the last question, can a, can a district choose, choose to stay in the alliance, as an alliance district?
They've expanded the program. I don't believe any have opted to leave. I think they have always consistently chosen to stay.
Yep. There is no, I'll try to answer that for you. Because when we originally booked Lisa in the School and State Finance Project, I was, first of all, I will say on behalf of the board, I am incredibly thankful that you came out because at the time we booked you, we could not get answers from the State Department of Education. And by booking you, miraculously, I started to get some answers. But what I will say is that what we found out from Melissa Jenkins, the chief turnaround officer from the state, is there is no exit from the alliance district funds, or, excuse me, from the alliance district program. So they do not have an exit criteria. And actually, there's state legislature which says as soon as you are named an alliance district, you can't just opt out.
I'm not considering that, that last statement, that you can't just opt out.
There's no exit criteria for those that are performing.
I think we know what happened down in Hartford this last time.
Right. So there are, there are, there are absolutely districts who were originally named alliance districts. They've been in there since 2013, 12, and they are very, they're some of the top performers. There is not an exit criteria for them to be able to exit. And I think as I sort of heard some conversation, there's not a lot of incentive for them to leave either.
Well, as a messenger, that could, that could be something, and I, you're on, I know you're on one of those committees and stuff like that. That's something that you really should look at.
Yeah.
Okay.
Tina, I see your hand up.
Where?
Yes, thank you for, hi Peter. Thank you for being here tonight. I just want to touch on a couple of things. First of all, the foundation not being adjusted since 2013 is something I picked up on Superintendent Macchio. I'm like, that is a long time, over 11 years. And we've seen what's happened to our daily budgets, our household, our inflation. I would like to thank you for pointing out the process for an alliance grant, that the grant is withheld until the plan is approved. There were many rumors going around that Enfield did not receive an alliance grant because we did not submit a plan, but that was not the case at all. I think it's really interesting too, is that I think you need to give this presentation to the Connecticut State Department of Education. I'm going to call this opposite night. Mostly everything you said is opposite of what we have in emails from them when we were first designated, but you are the, on the right side of this story and everything that's come forward. And to Superintendent Macchio's point, he might be getting calls now, but I think we actually know now what questions we need to ask. There was also, and I'm going to have to go back through my emails, but I believe there was some communication from the Connecticut State Department of Ed saying that three towns were going to be graduating out, and that's why three towns were going in, Enfield, Stratford, and Cleanfield. So there's a lot of contradictions and a lot of confusion on our part. And the confusion comes from many different stories, misinformation we got from the Connecticut State Department of Ed. I do have a question for you though. What can our legislators do specifically? Do legislators reach out to you? Can they reach out to you and sit with you for guidance on what they can do on behalf of their town? The ECS cost share formula, you know, just different things like that?
First of all, absolutely. They can, they can reach out to us. We're generally reaching out to, to legislators and, and building knowledge. And if your legislators are on the education committee, we are definitely working with them and also happy to continue working with them, happy to understand what their objectives are. So, you know, if the objective is, is to reduce the number of unfunded mandates, working, working with them to, to understand which ones are, are ones that are either most burdensome or that you really want to go away, that's the path to make that happen. And, and always, we're happy to, to help both understand what they're trying to do and, and see if we can help with what that path would look like.
So we have, we have long sitting, two representatives and a senator, and we have one new representative in now. And some of the things we've learned through your group is that they just need to be active, especially on the education committee, active on the legislative floor when advocating for our town. And I'm, I'm hoping that changes this year with the new counselor that got voted in. So again, I really appreciate this. I wish we had gotten to this sooner. There's a lot of validation in what you came and said tonight, so I appreciate you being here.
Thank you. And I, I will say, act, action matters, right? Parents and students and educators and community members and Board of Ed members raising their voice about, about concerns, it actually does matter and it affects change significantly. So I, I think, I think it's sometimes that people are concerned that they're not going to say the right thing, that they don't have all the information. But I think that talking about your experiences and, and what your concerns are, it helps elected officials make decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other? Dr. Kellman?
Will we be able to get your slides?
Okay. So I have the slides and I'll forward them as part of the weekly update.
So is Amanda, are you responsible for having Erica here?
No. I've asked about this. But I, yes.
I'll take all the credit if you won't mind.
I was going to compliment somebody. Thank you.
It took a long time ago.
No. But it was, again, I'm very thankful for the School and State Finance Project. Anytime we've, I've had a question and reached out there and incredibly timely in their responses. And when I received the responses from, it wasn't Lisa, it was another one of the gentleman over.
That was Michael.
Michael. When I received Michael's response, I sent back, because the nine of you need to understand this just as much as I understand this now. So we thought having them out would be helpful. So I'm, I'm glad you folks found this helpful.
Mr. Coburn.
All right. I want to thank you, Ms. Haynes, for coming out. I think that was a very informative presentation and I'm glad we'll, we'll get a copy of it. So I guess kind of to tie it up and as mentioned, so you guys are School and State Finance Project, you guys are a nonprofit policy organization. Obviously, you guys do like works ops, training and all that stuff, which seems great. And I think you hit on the point of like advocacy, which is real important. So I was kind of just like poking on your website while we were talking just to get a little more information. And it, one of the bullets you guys have is that, you know, since you guys were founded in 2015, you were able to secure additional 526 million in need-based fundings for Connecticut Public Schools. So I guess, could you kind of elaborate on that? Like, I know you kind of talked about advocating and stuff like that, but do you have like tangible examples or things that you guys have done that have been successful regarding funding and acquiring those funds to school districts that need it?
Sure. So in 2017, we catalyzed this new ACS formula to stop the block grant system. And the current weights were much smaller in the, in the first iteration of this. So two years later, we advocated strongly to expand those weights and raise them. So for, for instance, I think multilingual learners were at 15% and they're now at 25%. So, so that's the type of advocacy that we do policy-wise, looking at where, where the challenges are and, and advocating for good, consistent policy that, that can be executed appropriately. And I will tell you that, you know, we, we work on policy. I have the privilege of working out in community, right? So I get to do this all the time and it's a privilege every, every minute. It doesn't happen because we advocate. It happens because community members advocate. And I was a parent before I was in this role, right? I was, and I'm sure there are plenty of folks in here and out there that are just a mom and just a mom who's asking questions and just a mom who, who is trying to, to affect things. My dream when I started helping people advocate was that more people would raise their voice up in Hartford. We started in 2015. The community I first worked with in 2015 was Danbury. We have community members in over 81 communities. have community members in over 81 communities across the state. And, and advocacy happens because they raise their voice. And in the last two years, each year, there has been school funding legislation, more than 400 community members weigh in. That's how change happens. So when we talk about community members raising their voice, the power of people is exceptional.
Awesome. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Akri?
Erica, could you just explain again, when you said the Alliance District Funds are part of our ECS grant money?
Yep.
But it's not new money coming in?
Right.
Could you?
Sure. So Alliance District Funds, although they have a different title, are just, just a different path that some of your ECS dollars travel. It's kind of like some of your ECS dollars took a pit stop along the way. So there's no additional dollars, right? And I think it's kind of, it's, it is absolutely the biggest misunderstanding. There's Alliance District Grant, there's an Alliance District Program, these are funds. This is just ECS funds that are diverted and are connected to increases based on when you entered the program. And, and essentially, anything that you would have in additional education cost-sharing dollars after that point in time, if you were a phase-in district, would be diverted and would have to go through the additional accountability of an Alliance District Plan in order for you to receive those dollars. But definitely not an additional source of revenue. It is not like, you know, you, you found yourself identified in as Alliance District, so the state is giving you additional resources in order to lift you to a different position. It just withholds money that you would have otherwise had until you do a plan.
Just clarity for you, Jean. When Enfield became within the Alliance Program, they looked back, so 2022, they looked back a year. When other districts entered the Alliance Program, they looked back to 2012, in terms of what they were making in ECS. And as you can imagine, what Enfield received in ECS in 2012, and what Enfield would receive in ECS in 2022, is $4 million difference. When the state legislature added Enfield as an Alliance District in 2022, if they had gone back and looked to 2012, you would have $4 million that would be deemed Alliance Grant, and then the rest would be, still be in your, you know, what we know now. So it's all about when they looked back. So that's why your ECS hasn't changed. They only looked back this little bit of time. And, and Erica, I think that's one of the advocacy points that I know you folks will make from the School and State Finance Project, and what I will make as well. That's not fair. I mean, I know fair is not always equal, big saying for me within the education environment, but you can't look back 10 years for one group of people and one year for another group of people.
Right. Yep.
So that's, that right there is why you're, we don't have any breakout of our ECS. Okay?
All right.
So to clarify, instead of getting $4 million, we're now lucky because we get to keep $750,000.
Right, because we're not getting phased out.
And our look back year was during COVID. Is that new Common Core math again?
Yeah.
Oh, God.
Anybody else? Okay. Well, thank you insanely much for coming and answering our questions. This presentation was probably long overdue, and we appreciate it very much. And hopefully, we can even maybe get the part of the recording of the presentation and then our question and answer session. Maybe we can get that chunk, like on our website or something, so people can find it real easily. But anyways, thank you so very much.
Thank you all. It was a real privilege, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to go on to the next presentation.
Sounds good.
And I'm going to start off with a major thank you to Mr. Daig, who has been sitting here waiting for the next presentation from the board guest. So Mr. Daig is going to join us. As you know, he's the Director of Operations, and he needs to provide the board with an update regarding indoor air quality, as well as our HVAC update system. So shorter presentation, I think it's like six slides.
Yeah. We're going to have the benefit of having done this last year for the major HVAC updates. There was actually a change in the law for reporting timeline. So right now, currently, legislation, our legislation is that we have to have indoor, we have to do, use the EPA tools for schools checklist annually within the schools. So there's six checklists that we need to do from the school side. And then every five years, we have a series of HVAC reports that we need to do. We started that work, and we're actually ready, we're going, planning to submit last December, but there was a change in the law delaying that till 2026, so January 1st, 2026. That was good, because if you remember the presentation, I think it was last December 12th, we were actually missing airflow testing for some of our sites. That work was actually completed, and those reports were updated and on our indoor air quality page. And they was, were put up on May 1st. So those have been updated for all of the HVAC reports. So I'm not going to go through that again. I've already reported on those. There were no significant anomalies reported by the team testing, because Enfield High and JFK were two new sites. And the older buildings, we have a lot of the actual anomalies reported on the ventilation checklist, and I'll get to that on our next slide. So just, again, this is just part of a requirement in the law, that I just give you kind of a brief overview of our findings. All of the documents, so the checklists and the HVAC reports are on the district websites. And then the checklist will be on the school websites before the end of the month. If you're looking for them now, you can find the HVAC reports at enfieldschools.org. If you go to District Info, Notifications, and then there's the Indoor Air Quality and HVAC Reports tab. So just to show you, this is a sample page from one of the reports, EHS, JFK, and Eagle. This is just a summary from last year. The design capacity meets indoor air quality standards. All equipment was within life expectancy, because they were our newest facilities. At pre-K through 5 schools, Alcorn Annex, those were actually some of our, a large percent of the equipment was near the end or exceeding service life, and there was some need for makeup air for, or replacing unit ventilators. So that was just from last year what we reported. Since then, the town buildings department, grounds department has contracted with a SNE Building Systems. They're the company that manages our building management system. So they control the computers that control the HVAC within the buildings. They came out and did an assessment of all of our unit ventilators and HVAC systems in there. So they had a couple findings that they found within the reports. And so there's commonalities on the checklist that are reported. There were some issues. We need to take a look at BMS programming, which is just telling the system how much to open the outside air damper. Now, that's something they're working on. And this is something that was, came up during the pre-K through 5 school modernization, is that the air intakes for a lot of our buildings are in the bus lanes. If you look at the unit ventilators vents, if you go by Parkman, Barnard, or so on, they're at ground level. So they just tagged that on each of those as a concern. And there were several unit ventilators that were in need of service, so things like noisy motors, loose belts, and so on. So we're meeting with B&amp;G when we got those reports. They've so far compiled a prioritized list of service and maintenance that is needed for those. Buildings and grounds, although we can't change the placement of the intake vents without redoing the buildings, they are, Mark Gar has requested to have new anti-idling signs put up in front of all of the buildings to remind them of our policy and the requirements for the buses, for when they can idle and when they can't idle their vehicles. And at Central Office, we're reviewing some of our traffic patterns to see if there's any chances that we can reduce the number of vehicles that are in close proximity to the buildings. There are some limitations, though, on these. We still offer unit ventilators. As we had, I'd previously mentioned before, there are some things like controls or other things for our unit ventilators that are kind of reaching the end of their service life and can't be replaced. So there are things with just the designs of the units, their overall condition, and our kind of existing infrastructure that will require additional work to, to remedy some of the issues in the buildings. But the individual reports and checklists will be posted for all buildings on their school websites before the end of the month, and you can view all the ventilation checklists and HVAC reports now.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Daig. Any questions? Mr. Ryder?
I just wanted to say, related to the buses idling, too, sometimes there's parent pickup and drop-offs lines that are different from where the buses are in these buildings. So they should also get the no-idling signs.
They've put in a request for signs. They go up pretty much everywhere that vehicles can go.
Okay, good.
Okay. Any other questions, Ms. Pickett? First, thank you, Mr. Daig. I think you are the jack of all trades. And I appreciate you coming here and describing this information. I also think it's the important partnership with the town around our buildings. Just a couple of things that I want to stress. I know this was like about HVAC particular, but you mentioned the modernization work and some of the limitations of our older buildings. I think it is really critical, I'm going to keep pushing, that we continue that conversation about our K5 buildings and a long-term plan for Enfield. The reality is, we need to be thinking about how we are using our buildings efficiently and effectively. And we can get grants and additional funding if we have a long-term plan. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Daig, as always, I enjoy your conversations and your presentations. And you are like, Amanda said, jack of all trades and MacGyver. That's, I think I'm just going to call you that from now on, just MacGyver. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Okay, moving on. Superintendent's Report. First up is Student Rep Update.
Okay, so today, it's a little bit different. We have two parts. Me and Liv are going to talk a little bit about our survey that we had, that we talked about last time. It got implemented, and we got a pretty good response. So I wanted to talk about that at the end. But first things first, we have a band and jazz concert coming up tomorrow at Wednesday, on Wednesday, at 6:30, as well as the orchestra and chorus concert coming up next Monday, also at 6:30. We also have our pancake breakfast coming this Saturday. Very excited. So if you know any kids that are at EHS and they want to like donate, we still have a donation box open at, in the main office. Also, it'll be from 9 to 11, and Santa will be there.
Ooh.
And Buddy the Elf.
And, oh, cool.
We also have a possible, save the date for December 18th, from 5 to 7 is going to be Black and Brown Student Union's first fundraiser. It's going to be a movie night. So if you guys are interested in that, it's open. There will be concessions. Movie will be released. I'll try and make a Facebook account so I can make a post. We also have Winter Traditions coming up on December 12th, from 6 to 7:30. I know Enfield Youth Council is going to be there, and I believe so is Loaves and Fishes. I think they're doing Kwanzaa. It's going to be at Enfield Youth Center, also known as Alcorn, down the street. We also have a Panera fundraiser coming up for the class of 2027. It's going to be December 21st, from 4 to 8, at the Panera on Elm Street. And lastly, our survey results. I'm going to focus on our climate and culture part of the survey, and Liv's going to do the other two parts. This part is the one that we focused on the most, because these are the ones that we're going to take, try and take further steps on first. We found that during this first set of the survey, the priority was mental health resources for kids at EHS. We talked a little bit about our next steps for that. And we were thinking about hosting focus groups for both teachers and students, so that teachers can hear what students are talking about, what they would like to see, as well as teachers being able to kind of incorporate that into either our curriculum, what we do from day to day. We were thinking improving student awareness, resources in the building such as CHS, I mean, CHC, as well as helping students with stress reduction strategies, organizational skills, and increasing use of brain breaks. But we'll see further steps on that when we have the focus group. You can go, Liv.
Good evening, everyone. We will be having a spirit week starting this Friday through next Friday. This Friday will be pajama day for CCMC, right? Yeah. Monday will be flannel day. Tuesday will be ugly sweater day. Wednesday will be hat day. Thursday will be festive outfit day. And next Friday will be festive class colors day. So freshmen will be wearing green, sophomores will be wearing gold, juniors will be wearing white, and seniors will be wearing red. All the winter sports have started their seasons, or not official seasons, but they're all started in preseason. ProStar is having a bingo night on Friday, December 13th, and everyone can go to help ProStar raise funds for their trip to Disney for their national cooking competition. The class of 2026 has a Red Robin fundraiser on December 19th. And as Izzy had already said, we sent out a survey to just get some general data for the school. According to our survey, the top three priorities for students regarding school facility and technology are number three being bathroom access, number two being internet access, and number one being building cleanliness. And our last question was for students to rank issues regarding academic opportunities from most important to the least important. The third most important to them was career exploration opportunities, second was access to course offerings, and number one was being access to academic support and extra help. So Izzy and I, and the other Board of Ed representatives, will be working on creating some solutions, some things we could do to help these issues that students brought up. And just to point out, the survey, we had 438 students respond, which is about 30% of the high school population. Thank you.
Can you guys send us like a copy of the results? Okay, cool. Yeah, go ahead.
Kind of on that, that Liv was talking about how our last question that we had was they thought that career exploration was extremely important. And I know you were just talking about that last time that we had that, which is why I wanted to stress that that's super important. We lost all of, because of the budget cuts, we lost all of our EMT career explorations. We lost our career center. Students want that back. And for a lot of kids that aren't going into college fields or like for higher learning, those are, school is the only really resource that they can get those kind of firsthand experiences before going out into the field.
Thank you, Izzy. Thank you. Olivia?
Izzy and Liv, you comfortable? I have a copy of the survey. I can just forward it to the board as part of my Friday update. Okay.
All right. Keep going.
Just a reminder, for Enfield Public Schools, closed December 23rd through January 1st, winter, Christmas, New Year's break. And obviously, we always want to wish our students, staff, families a very happy holiday season and happy, healthy New Year. Tina, hopefully you feel better, much better soon. Related to the, my update regarding the public schools, just a couple of different topics to bring you up to speed on. The la, basically every waking moment since our last board meeting has been dealing with the creation of the next budget. So we are very deep into the 2025-26 budget creation process. All of the presentations have been completed from the various departments, department heads, directors, administrators, and schools. And at this point, our business manager is basically at home compiling it all together into a single number for us. We are spending a lot of time analyzing every individual account line. And I think what you're going to see as we move this forward is a, a lot of information. So just prepare yourselves. But we're doing a lot of adjusting in terms of where items are being allocated to and where they're allocated from. And where I think, I'm very, very proud of the administrative team for the presentations that they provided, and the cabinet members for being willing to sit hours on end analyzing every account one at a time, in terms of how we can identify savings to be able to repurpose for, for next year's budget. And related to, I know somebody mentioned the pre-K to 5 facility update. We do, we are projected to be on Town Council agenda for next Monday, the 16th. I should hear definitively, hopefully, Thursday morning, that whether or not we are still on that agenda. And during that, at that time, And during, at that time, I would anticipate presenting really a reimagining of the pre-K to 5 public schools in terms of what we would want to do, how we would want to do it, and sort of the benefits that would be brought forward as part of that. Obviously, a portion of that is a comparison to what it would take to bring the current facilities up to date. As you heard from Mr. Dag, there's a number of issues that need to be addressed, and so we will do some comparison for those, as well as what we could offer everyone moving forward, should we be able to do some other issues and provide some more regional type of programming, because there is a revenue stream there for us to be able to take advantage of. On a hiring update, I am very excited to tell you that we did initial interviews and reference checks for the educational instructional teaching assistants that I notified you about, and those are the extra set of hands that we would be placing into the elementary classrooms that have the 28 and 29 students in it. We have some folks that have already come in to take care of their paperwork. We have other folks that we will be completing their paperwork on, so we're right around the corner, we will be able to start bringing those folks in to provide some extra assistance and support. I also want to make you aware that we have begun conversations and discussions, at least at the cabinet level, regarding some additional assistance as it comes to behavioral needs in the district. I want to say we went from about, and as we, am I stealing your thunder from the finance report?
No, you can go ahead.
Okay. We went from a little over 40 behavior techs to now a little over 20 behavior techs, so we, there was a significant loss in terms of behavior techs. That has begun to show. So as we provided a financial update to the committee before this meeting, there will be some work that we will be doing to try to hopefully bring some of those behavior techs back, because the support and assistance is necessary. So we recognize it for the staff that are listening in, and obviously, the public. We recognize, we see it, we hear you, and we are working to address those issues. Town Hall, out of Town Hall, I can tell you. And I know this was a question last board meeting regarding the work order system. So there is a new work order system that is being implemented in Town Hall. We are part of that work order system, so the concept of just sending an email that when you need something done is going to be going away, and there'll actually be a tracking system, which will get put into place, which will be nice. So we are working on unveiling that. And my last update will just be about the vision of the graduate work. That has not stopped. We are continuing on with that. At our last Administrative Council session, we broke up into small groups of four to five members and had lengthy discussions regarding the competencies and the skills that we feel as though are necessary to be incorporated into that vision of the graduate work. And we also worked on sort of what, determining what the next steps would be that we feel as though would be best related to how we can share that out and how we can have the community have a stronger understanding regarding what that vision of the graduate work will be. So I can see us bringing forward a presentation in the future as we continue to go down that road, but we do have more work to be happening at the Administrative Council level, and then we could share back out. I think that's enough for tonight for me.
Thank you, Mr. Macio. All right, moving on to audiences. Okay, all right. One, all right. All right. Maureen, I know you know the drill, so.
Yeah, I know the drill. Maureen Griffin, Abbey Road. Mr. Macio, vision of a graduate right here. Thank you for addressing it.
Like I can read your mind at this point.
Kind of sick, okay? Peter, enjoy your retirement. Student reps, you're knocking it out of the park, keep it going. The most important thing you bring into the table, in my view, is eyes and ears of what's really going on and what really matters, and not just our presumptions, because we're not there. You guys are. So thank you, you're doing a great job of that. Wow, no adjustment since 2013, and we wonder why we can't provide what we need to for our kids. Okay. All right. Now, last week, last meeting, something was said that didn't impact me, but it impacted one, two, three ladies up there, referring to you ladies as rhinos. Referring to you guys that way, in my opinion, is actually a compliment, because it means that you're not just looking what falls on what side of the aisle, but is what falls into serving the interests of the children. And so I think that's a compliment. Janet, you and I don't always agree, you know it, because I let you know. I write besides talking. But I really respect that, even though we don't always agree, and I think our primary disagreement comes down to our view of how we coordinate and live our lives and how we live within a society. We both guide them by our faith bases, and where we diverge, I think, is the idea of how much of that goes into a public system, where there's so much difference of beliefs, practices, everything. But I have a lot of respect for how I have seen you focus on areas that you see as problems and how to address them in a way that benefits everyone, and not simply a belief system. You know, your work for the internet safety. I just wanted to tell you that, because I was giving you a hard time, so I won't. I believe in both sides, all right? So I'd like to take it. And just as we go into budget season, I just wanted to read you a couple of, I'm Catholic, so yeah, I come from a Catholic perspective, sayings from Dorothy Day, the founder of the Catholic worker movement. And I think it's really important that we try and think about this as we prioritize, as we say, but these kids, but those kids, they're coming from, their parents are. They're kids, they're, because people insulated by their own comfort lose sight of it, and it has such dramatic impacts on our kids. You know, this is totally Catholic. The gospel takes away our right forever to discriminate between the deserving and the undeserving poor. And please keep that in mind as we move forward. Thanks.
Thanks, Maureen. Okay. Board member, all right, Mr. Genitis, go for it.
First of all, since this will be our last meeting, I'd like to wish everybody out there a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Hope everybody has safe holidays. Okay, to begin with, I'd like to thank, this is my last rant ever, I'd like to thank all those who, all those people who voted for me last November to give me a chance to try to better the Board of Education. And my apologies go out to those who voted for me, because I'm not completing my two-year term. Now, going from my left to my right, I'd like to make a comment to each of my soon-to-be ex-colleagues. First, I see a man at the end who's only a year younger than me. And he, like I, have witnessed the generational changes in our society over the past decades. And he spent a lot of work with kids, working with children. Next, I see a lady who has a wherewithal to ask questions and seek answers. She is passionate about her beliefs, to say the least. Then, I don't see, because she's not here, probably the longest-serving member on the Board of Education ever in the town of Enfield. She and I actually, at one time, had a very civil relationship with one another. She is someone who is extremely knowledgeable about the workings of the Board of Education and the rules and regulations that the Board must adhere to. And then there's her longtime sidekick. He's a hardworking, involved member of the school community. He has his hand in and raising large amounts of money for many causes. He has organized and run many events throughout the Enfield Public Schools. That said about these four Democratic members, they have done a lot of good things for the kids in Enfield. Yet, I still find myself at odds with them over many issues as to the hows and whys of many things this Board should be doing. They have their beliefs and opinions, and I have mine. That brings me to the other side of the aisle, the Republican majority. The chairperson on this Board of Ed is without a doubt an extremely hardworking individual. She's fantastic with numbers and digging for information. She attends more meetings with more people than the public will ever know. Then there are the two ladies to my right, one who writes exceptionally well when writing policy, the other a former music teacher in Springfield. I know they both have deep Christian convictions and care very deeply about the kids, particularly when it comes to whether or not the books in our libraries are age-appropriate reading materials for the ages they are intended for, and for their strong beliefs in the social and emotional well-being of children. And that would include you too, Doc. These two ladies, along with one lady who sits on the Town Council, are three of the nicest, sweetest women I've known, who have served in elected political positions here in Enfield. That brings me to the young man at the end of the dais. In my opinion, he's the diamond in the rough on this Board. He's inquisitive, hardworking, and a research hound. He is well-spoken and always well-dressed. Matched you tonight, though. I've always thought, you know, when he gets on his speaking horse, he should let his hair down, if he had any. And finally, to the Enfield Republican Town Committee, you better start the search, not just for my replacement, but for five like-minded individuals who can work together and agree on a direction the next Board of, for the next Board of Education. If you can't do that, then you don't deserve the majority next November. Also, as for filling my seat, get off your dupas and change the archaic nomination and replacement policy, and get somebody before the Town Council for confirmation ASP. Finally, I urge any retired teachers who live in Enfield to consider running for the Board of Education. You know what the kids need, you know what the support, you know what support the teachers need, and you know the town and what the town can afford. I don't give a rat's petard as to which party you belong to, Democratic or Republican. The Board of Education needs people who know and have lived and taught within the four walls of a classroom. To paraphrase Martin Luther King, a quote, context is obviously different, I'll end these words with two quick quotes. Free at last, free at last, thank God almighty, after tonight, I'll be free at last. And Walter Cronkite would end with, thank you and good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Who would like to go next? And Dr. Keaton, okay?
Thank you, Peter, for your kind words, I think, about me. I am inquisitive, I like to ask questions, and I appreciate that feedback. Not sure about your quote choices, but that's all right. I do have a question, if that's all right, to you, Mr. Macio, so through the chair to Mr. Macio, regarding, you had mentioned potentially presenting at the Town Council regarding the school modernization and some like re-envisioning. Is that similar to the information that was last presented as far as kind of the various options that are, we had last seen?
Go ahead, if you'd like to. We've all been working on it together, so anybody can really answer. Do you want?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. I just want to be a little prepared for what to see, because I was having lots of conversations.
It's very similar to what was provided to you, but it also provides some additional detail related to expansion of the Eagle Academy.
Perfect. Thank you. Izzy, you make me feel old, so if you would like something posted on Facebook, you don't have to create an account, feel free to share it. We'll make sure it's posted and all the probably 40-year-old and older audience on Facebook will receive, so feel free to share that. I'd be happy to make sure it gets posted on Facebook. But in all seriousness, I do want to echo Maureen's comments about your contributions up here as student reps. Not only have you contributed during your portions, but during discussions that I think is very valuable, but this added component of a student survey, I'm very excited about. I love the three areas that it looks like you guys are asking. I do have a wonder, is it okay if I ask a question of them? Is it going to be a consistent survey that you're going to use? Like, how are you envisioning using this survey and getting feedback and information from students?
So we kind of wanted to send out this survey as like a general, get some general feedback, and based off our top answers, we're thinking of sending out a couple more surveys to get some more specified feedback throughout the year a couple more times, obviously depending on anything that may come up of students, and we're, yeah, yeah.
Beautiful. Go ahead, Izzy.
Yeah, like Liv said, when we first came up with the idea, when we got inspired during the conference, we had planned that we were going to do an open response. However, that changed a little bit, just due to some of our policies, but we're working on creating a new survey that is within the guidelines, and then we're able to give you guys the survey results that we will have.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I think it's really important, sorry, go ahead.
We also, if you guys have any questions that we need to ask of the questions, of the students, we want to know that, because if you guys have any issues, we can bring through Mr. Macio, and then we can put that into our surveys.
Perfect. I think so, I will share a little, consistent survey instruments are very helpful, so thinking about if you're collecting information, being able to kind of compare those trends, like are those consistent topics? And then I do think there could be maybe interesting ways that we can get student feedback on some of the work that we do as a Board around like policies that we post that typically nobody ever gives us feedback on, but maybe there's ways that we could get information out and feedback. So just some considerations, I'm excited about this. I think this is a great first step, and I just want to thank you both for your work on this Board. My next comment, so for over a year, I've been advocating for better traffic support on Route 5 specifically. I've requested our SRO support at the high school, potentially additional crossing guards, better signage. I'm concerned about the 45 mile an hour signs that are on Route 5 that are like bordering our school zone areas. So I just want to make the public aware that I have had some communications with contacts at DOT and Sergeant Meyer and in correspondence with Superintendent Macio regarding these concerns. It seems as if some of these concerns are being addressed in the subcommittee from our Town Council on Public Safety. I am asking that those be brought to joint safety or someplace where Board has representation, or if there's a way that we can follow up with DOT regarding the concerns, because what I see as what is considered school zone signs that look like two people crossing with a purse are considered school zone signs. They don't say school anywhere on them, and I'm hoping that DOT is taking this seriously, and there are additional supports that we can have. I also wanted to follow up on comments from last meeting. I want to reiterate that blue rooms are not used for punishment, so Mr. Coburn, comparing the use of a blue room to our arrest rate or suspension data is really incredibly problematic. I tried to respond in the moment last meeting, but I think it's important that I reiterate just a few points. The purpose and function of this space is safety, not punishment. The use of these spaces can actually be more humane and dignified approach rather than restraining a student. There are very specific protocols and guidance from the State Department of Ed, along with laws and requirements. There are timeframes, monitoring for health and safety by the nurse, and specific documentation that needs to be required. To me, the most important wonder or consideration for us as Board of Ed is to consider the impact of the drastically reduced staffing and so many of our proactive de-escalation supports, like the behavior techs that Superintendent Macio mentioned, additional teachers, social workers, if this could be resulting in more dysregulated and escalated student behaviors, which then in turn would increase our use of blue rooms, our use of 911 calls, or increase in arrests. So if that's the case, actually, our conversation needs to be around proactive staffing and how do we support a budget that actually gives our schools the supports that they need? I also just want to give a shout out and a thank you to Carrie Wiley and all of our district staff, our PTOs, and folks who have been doing so much communication around community happenings. There's a lot going on during this time of year. Parent Square has been a phenomenal Parent Square has been a phenomenal tool for communication, so thank you for the use of that. And with the holiday season coming, I just want to acknowledge that it is a long break. We do come back for Thursday, Friday. I think it's really important that families are planning for this time off. It's nice to have the extended break, but every day matters in school, so ensuring that we are coming back to school when our break is over, and also just being cognizant that there's many celebrations happening during this time, so being open and reflective of all. So thank you, have a great holiday season, and a happy new year.
Dr. Kellman, I believe you had your.
Thank you. I realize that what I'm going to be talking about may not seem to be immediately relevant to our normal Board of Education discussions and topics, but I think it's a subject that has very, very profound implications with respect to the health of our staff and our student body, and that's the issue of vaccinations. In recent years, vaccination rates nationwide have undergone an unparalleled decline. I've talked about vaccinations before, but vaccines have become a very significant issue since the last presidential election, and I thought this would be a good time to say a few words on the subject from the perspective of, from the perspective of a pediatrician who started practicing medicine when smallpox was still circulating in the country, albeit rarely. And I realize this is going to take a little bit longer than I normally speak, but I think it's really an important subject. I wanted to say a few words about five contagious diseases that had been thought to be on the verge of eradication, but which are coming back for an encore performance. Pertussis, which is whooping cough, epiglottitis, meningitis, polio, and of course measles. And again, I want to stress that the reason I'm saying this is that these may be diseases that make an appearance, again, in our student body, and the question is going to be, how do we deal with this? First of all, pertussis causes a terrible cough, but it's more than that. The cough is paroxysmal, the coughing episodes can be so severe and prolonged that the child literally cannot breathe for an extended period of time, can turn purple, and can even experience a seizure. The episode ends with a deep, forceful inspiratory whoop, hence the name. The first time I witnessed a case of pertussis, I almost lost my lunch. The child had copious amounts of phlegm and secretions pouring out of her mouth and nose. She was a helpless four-year-old child. Before her spasm of coughing finally ceased, after which she vomited, and nobody could help her. Complications of pertussis include fractured ribs, pneumonia, and encephalopathy, which is damage to the brain. If a young infant should contract pertussis, you probably don't need to worry too much about coughing, that's not a significant symptom in a young infant, but apnea is. The child can literally stop breathing and die. And this is the reason why obstetricians routinely vaccinate their pregnant patients, who will then pass protective antibodies to their newborn infants in utero. By the time a child develops the classic symptoms of whooping cough, there is no effective treatment. Antibiotics may prevent transmission to other people, but they won't lessen the severity of the symptoms. This illness is preventable with vaccination. Every pediatric resident has their own most dreaded disease, and mine was epiglottitis. In the emergency room, you would typically find the child sitting forward in the tripod position, supporting his weight on his arms with his head extended, his mouth open, and his breathing strider, so a little bit like croup. Your next step, as a resident, was to ask the nurse to call for the anesthesiologist or the ENT surgeon to get the hell down to the emergency room as soon as possible, then do absolutely nothing but keep that child calm until help arrived to secure the airway. If the child became agitated in any way, the airway would suddenly close up, and they can literally suffocate and die right in front of you. I used to hate it when I was called down to the emergency room to see one of those kids with epiglottitis. This illness is preventable with vaccination. Today, I wonder if a pediatrician in training would even be able to recognize a case of epiglottitis. Lucky them. Prior to vaccination, a fever in a young infant raised the distinct and dread possibility of meningitis, even in the absence of other signs or symptoms, often, if not always, necessitating a spinal tap. Today, bacterial meningitis is exceedingly rare, thanks to vaccines. Until the 1950s, polio was a very common and very horrific infectious disease. It was so common that many terrified families wouldn't even permit their children to go swimming in public pools. Polio tends to peak in the summer and early autumn months. All of us have seen copies of Look magazine photographs of rows and rows of iron lungs keeping polio patients alive who would have otherwise succumbed to respiratory failure, a sad foretelling of COVID, another preventable disease. The Salk and Saban vaccines saved countless numbers of lives, but you only have to look at the children of Gaza to understand that once vaccinations cease, polio comes back with a vengeance. And finally, there is measles. The brouhaha over the measles vaccine began in response to a publication in the highly esteemed medical journal Lancet, which purported to demonstrate a linkage between the vaccine and autism. The article was subsequently thoroughly discredited, so much so that the Lancet editors had to retract it and make a very humiliating public apology. The lead author, Andrew Wakefield, lost his license to practice medicine for publishing data which he knew to be false. In the years that have followed, a plethora of evidence-based articles have been published convincingly demonstrating a lack of evidence linking the measles vaccine to autism. Nonetheless, once disinformation reaches the public domain, it is extremely difficult, if not impossible, to remove it. Until the 1990s, many experts in infectious diseases felt that measles would be the next disease to be eradicated. Now it's making a comeback worldwide, including in Samoa, where in 2019, hundreds of children were sickened with measles and over 80 died, but don't worry, it's only measles. Measles is not a benign infection. Common serious complications include encephalitis, again, that's inflammation of the brain, bronchonemonia, and laryotracheobronchitis. One rare but particularly frightening late complication is a condition called subacute sclerosing panencephalitis, a late onset complication of measles generally occurring years after contracting the disease and characterized first by progressively worsening school performance, then other manifestations such as atrophy of the optic nerve causing blindness, behavioral changes which at first are subtle but then become frankly very bizarre, involuntary jerking motions called myoclonus, which may or may not be accompanied by seizures, and finally dementia progressing to stupor or coma. Thankfully, this had been a very rare complication of measles, but it was virtually eradicated after the introduction of the measles vaccine. It's just a matter of time before we see a return of this horrible condition. If you feel uncomfortable about vaccinations, you can and should talk to your doctor about them. If you're still in doubt, contact the State Department of Health. If you're still not sure, go to the CDC website, or the website for the American Academy of Pediatrics, or for the American Academy of Family Physicians, or the American Public Health Association, or the World Health Organization. I can assure you that regardless of which authoritative source you turn to, you're going to get the same answer. Childhood vaccinations are safe, effective, and life-saving, but please don't rely on organizations driven by baseless conspiracy theories. Your child's health is too important to be placed in the hands of people with a misguided political agenda. I'll end by making a plea for our school district to make it easier for school-age kids to get vaccinated by opening a number of vaccine clinics here in the Enfield school system. Stowe has already opened a flu vaccine clinic, and thus far, it has been highly successful. Other Enfield schools should follow their lead. Let's never forget that vaccines were among the most transformative advances of the 20th century. This is no time to march backward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kellman. Who would like to go next? Anybody? Okay, I'll go. Yeah, Ms. Akri, go for it.
I just wanted to say that I was looking forward to attending the Gingerbread Jamboree at Stowe this Friday, and I'm looking forward to attend the musical concert at Enfield High on Monday. And I just wanted to say to everyone, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and have a healthy and happy prosperous New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Akri. Okay, Mr. Ryder?
I just wanted to thank the parent volunteers of Jingle Jam. I was at the Jingle Jam Safe Grad 2025 auction on Saturday. A lot of good items, we had a good time, great turnout. It's usually the first weekend in December, so hopefully we'll be there, right? Next year? You gonna be at the Safe Grad Jingle Jam? I will be there with you as well. Izzy, did you have a chance to go?
No, but my mom did. She was there all night.
Oh, I didn't see your mom there. We had a very good time, though, it was a very good turnout, and I just wanted to thank the parents that helped put that on. I also, as another reminder, make sure you sign up for Parent Square. There's a lot less, if not zero, flyers going home at this point. It's all electronic, so please make sure on Parent Square, anything that goes home electronically from your school admins will be in Parent Square. As both of our student reps said, this Saturday at EHS, 9 to 11, is the pancake breakfast, and the fundraisers make donations to the Enfield Food Shelf. Also Buddy the Elf will be there, so I look forward to seeing you again, Buddy. And then you can go straight from there to the Reese Across America Ceremony at noon at St. Pat's, so I wanted to remind everybody about that. And then again, this Friday, December 13th, is PJ Day. Check Enfield PTO website, Facebook, et cetera, for the links to make a donation. It's give.c Connecticut childrens.org/EnfieldPTO24, and I look forward to visiting the schools on Friday. So thank you, and everybody have a happy holidays and a happy new year, and we'll see you in January.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Anybody else? Mr. Coburn?
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll be relatively brief, I know with these meetings and with government in general, we try to balance efficiency with, you know, having productive conversations and actually getting business done, which I think our last several meetings, we've been making good strides towards getting done. You know, whether we disagree on things, having these conversations are important, having them publicly, dialoguing with the public, dialoguing with the administration, I think is important, as we identify, you know, needs, wants, priorities, and things of that sort. I want to thank the Vice Chair for his farewell letter, and again, for his time of service, not only on the board but to the town of Enfield overall. I'm pleased that we got the update, and ironically, it mentioned it regarding the work order system, and then it also tied into the student survey, that one of the concerns that came up was just like building cleanliness and stuff. So I think we're putting a focus on it, and whether it's repairs, whether it's leaks, or whether it's classrooms not getting cleaned, we're, you know, getting more attention, I think, is going to be effective to identifying the problem and then solving the problem more efficiently. Also want to thank the superintendent for the Friday updates, I think those are going very well comparatively to, you know, previous terms. The amount of information was not always steady, and I think we're seeing a lot better two-way flow of communication from the administration to the board, back and forth. I know we're getting questions answered a lot better, and I'm pleased with the conversations I'm hearing about how the 2026 budget is going to go, and I look forward to seeing that product and hoping it's a manifestation of, you know, not only the priorities of the board, but the priorities of the community, the stakeholders, and then also tying in, you know, my personal initiative on the transparency side, so all that information is there. On that note, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Mrs. LeBlanc? Out in virtual land.
Hi, yes, I just have, yeah. Just a couple of quick things. Superintendent Macchio, you mentioned, talking about how our reduction of BTs has been showing in the behaviors of our students, and one of the things I just wanted to put out there is during last year's budget discussions, there are members of the town councils that think that parents can just do the job because they're cheaper, without really understanding the difference between a behavior tech and a parent educator. So those words have been said several times, so I'll be interested to see how that is presented and how that goes over in the budget for next year. I guess I kind of wanted that to be an FYI for you. I wanted to thank Scott for mentioning PJ Day. Usually, I'm there with him with a PJ Day shirt on. I have a true story from a grandmother whose granddaughter had cancer, and due to the money that was raised through CCMC, her granddaughter qualified for some chemo trials that she would have not been able to afford on her own. So PJ Day is impactful to our local community. To Izzy and Olivia, your input is very important to the school community, and it's very important for me as a board member to hear. Student voice, I will never say this enough, is so important. I appreciate all the work you're doing, and not only that you're doing work, you are trying to implement changes and taking suggestions, so I really appreciate that, and I would like to wish everybody a safe and healthy holiday.
LeBlanc, anybody else? Okay. So I wanted to first say that I was lucky enough to be able to go to Enfield High to their career day, and I got to talk to multiple classrooms, and the students were amazing. I actually talked to them about Board of Ed stuff, and I talked to them about my regular job at Aetna. The questions that they had and asked were great questions, but I really enjoyed the questions that the students came up with by themselves, and I enjoyed myself, and I hope that the students learned about a whole slew of different careers. There was definitely a lot of people that were there, and hopefully, your eyes got open to maybe something that you had not thought about before. And like multiple people have said, Izzy and Olivia, thank you for your contributions. You've definitely taken it, you know, a step farther than previous student reps have done, and I think that it adds a added layer of leadership for you guys, so thank you very much. I wanted to also thank Mr. Macchio for his email update about the seclusion rooms that he had sent to questions that JI reporter had. It was very informative, and they were attachments that were directly from the Connecticut State Department of Education that were very helpful in outlining some more additional information, so that was good, thank you for that. And on that same thanking of Mr. Macchio, but also Deputy Superintendent and everybody in the cabinet, and all the administrators that have, and teachers that have given their input to the budget this year, I think the whole process so far has been a great conglomeration of everybody level-setting the playing field and saying, look, this is what we really need, and they put the time and the effort in to say why they needed it, and I know that this week and next week is going to be heavily intense of just the cabinet coming up with the budget, so I just wanted to thank you, because I know that that is a long, drawn-out job, that does not just go from nine to five, it's a 24/7 thing, so thank you very much for your time on that. And then I wanted to thank, and I'm sure the entire board really wants to thank Judy Sullivan, who is retiring at the end of this month. She is one of the administrative assistants. Technically, she is Deputy Superintendent's Administrative Assistant, but she does a lot of other things, and she is retiring after 20-plus years, and I would love to give, and I think we would all love to give her a big, huge thank you for your time in the I wanted to wish everybody a happy holidays, and Peter, if, you know, USPS was on time and it wasn't the Christmas season, we would have a plaque for you this evening, thanking you for your time, and I just wanted to say thank you for your time on this board and the other boards that you served on. the other boards that you served on. I mean, it is a lot of time and effort that you don't get paid for, that you're giving out of the kindness of your heart, and whether people agree with your take or they don't agree with your take, I think everybody can agree on the fact that you were a public servant and you served your community, and not a lot of people can say that, and that is a calling that not many people can do, and I'd like to thank you for that. So, that's basically everything, but you could take your nameplate home tonight, and when we get the plaque, we will give it to you. All right, so I guess we're going to move on to real business now, okay? So, unfitness business, policy revisions, second readings. Ms. Cushman? We've got 3280.
Yeah.
Okay.
The policies on the agenda for our second reading this evening have been introduced in response to the growing interest amongst local community members and friends of the Enfield Public Schools to engage in various fundraising efforts. These policies provide clearly defined guidelines as a means to protect the best interests of our school district and to make the most of these fundraising efforts. Policy 3280, Gifts, Grants, and Bequests to the District provides direct guidance and criteria for donations to the district. As a reminder, though grants are addressed in this policy alongside gifts and bequests, the process by which grants are applied for and obtained differs drastically from simply receiving gifts and bequests. Requiring not only the approval of the Superintendent, the process requires his signature on the grant application, so therefore, the language in the policy is in no way prohibitive to the approval of receiving grants applied for on behalf of the district. I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of Policy 3280.
All right.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Cushman, second by Mr. Ryder. Any discussion? Mr. Coburn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I'll be quick. I know we discussed this last meeting. I think this is a fairly needed policy in terms of guidelines that we need to put out there. I know we made a minor amendment at the last meeting, so definitely in favor of getting this approved.
Okay. Any other? Okay, so sensing the roll call, please, Kathy. Mr. Ryder?
Are we doing both as one again?
One at a time.
Okay, sorry, yes.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callen?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. 3281.2, Mrs. Cushman.
Right. So, Policy 3281.2 specifically addresses fundraising campaigns, more commonly called crowdfunding. This policy recognizes the value of fundraising and provides structuring guidelines for both members of our community and staff alike. I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of Policy 3281.2, Fundraising Campaigns, Crowdfunding.
Seconded.
Motion made by Ms. Cushman, second by Dr. Callen. Any discussion? Mr. Coburn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I'll echo a lot of my comments. I think this was a well-needed policy that was worked on in committee and discussed on the first reading, so we'll be supporting it.
Any other discussion? All right, roll call, please, Kathy. Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callen?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Moving on to new business, April 22nd, 2025 Regular Board of Ed Meeting Date Change. So, we were notified by the Town Manager's Office about a date change that is needed for our upcoming April 22nd, 2025 Regular Meeting. The council needs to meet here in council chambers on this date. My assumption is that that is during budget season, so I'm sure that they're going to be having budget deliberations, I'm assuming. I don't know if that's the 100% answer, but I'm assuming since it's April, that that's the logical explanation. So, there are a few options in our packets that we can choose. My recommendation is that we choose Tuesday, April 29th, to meet. When I looked at the calendar, I was first like, oh, why don't we just meet the day after, which would be April 23rd, because I didn't want to have us meet two successive weeks in a row, but because of the way the calendar works, if we meet on Tuesday, April 29th, there will be a week break before our next meeting.
It's one of those five-week months, five Tuesdays.
Yep. So, if you're okay with that, then I would like to put a motion on the floor to change the date of the April 22nd Board Meeting to Tuesday, April 29th. And we have discussion after that.
I'll second that.
Okay. So, a motion made by myself and seconded by Mr. Ryder. Any discussion? Mr. Coburn?
So, Madam Chair, just to confirm, so we want to cancel the regular meeting of April 22nd and then schedule the special meeting for Tuesday, the 29th, in the chambers at 7:00 PM?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, sensing the roll call, please. Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callen?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, moving on to Board Committee Reports, Curriculum Committee.
The next curriculum meeting is scheduled for December 19th, and on the agenda is Program of Studies Changes, Elementary Instructional Teaching Assistance Discussion, and Review of Dates for the 2025 Curriculum Meetings.
Okay.
Can we make a comment?
Yeah.
I'm not quite sure if this is the right spot, but since this is my last meeting, I like to speak about two different things. One, I noticed in the write-up that you sent home to us was about the Fundamental Math Program being canceled at the high school and being replaced with Algebra I.
Pre-Algebra?
Pre-Algebra?
Yes.
But you're getting rid of the Fundamental Math.
As part of the discussion that is going to be brought forward, I believe, to Curriculum Committee, was looking at the Fundamental Math Program and how we can better service the needs of the kids going, who are not ready to enter into Algebra I coming out of eighth grade.
Okay, so that's, that is such an important class for those kind of kids, without a doubt. I mean, they learn basic math, basically. And then the other thing is, listening to the Reefs Across America, I don't know if we can legally do this or not, but is there any chance that we could possibly make, at the middle school level, US History a year and a half and Geography a half a year? I mean, they still fall under the category of, I guess, history or social studies requirements. The reason being is, I mean, she so distinctly pointed out that, you know, these kids should be made aware of this stuff, but when you're starting to do American history, and I might be wrong on the very first one, but I think it's second grade where they start doing like the Pilgrims and the Mayflower and all that stuff, and then the next time they get American history is going to be fifth grade, and a lot of times, the fifth-grade teachers go all the way back to the colonial time periods that could have been, that are covered earlier. To me, it seems like we have to have a rock-solid place where each grade level has to get to a certain point, because as history gets, I mean, I'm just thinking, since I've retired, everything that's happened in the world, and, you know, it's the one subject that just gets longer and longer and longer. And then, once the kids leave fifth grade, they will have come up to, say, I don't know, maybe World War I or the Industrial Revolution, and then in eighth grade, they can pick up and try to get into at least the 20th century. So, you know, it alleviates a lot of the overlapping and doing things that people like to do, like in the elementary school, like the Egyptians seem to always get the highest priority over and over again, same thing with the Pilgrims and stuff. So, if there's any chance of finding some way of getting more US History at the middle school, I think that would be advantageous to the students learning our history, because for every year that goes by, something gets cut out. Okay, that's it for the curriculum, those two things.
Anybody else? All right. Finance and Budget Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Finance and Budget Committee actually met earlier tonight at 5:30 here at Town Hall. Our next meeting will be Monday, January 6th, at 5:00 PM back at the central office. During tonight's Finance and Budget Meeting, we discussed the current year budget summary, the grant summary, as well as monthly expenditures for November, accounts of payroll, which will be discussed under Item 15 later tonight. Just some highlights of the FY 2025 Budget Summary that we discussed in committee. So, out of the current year appropriated budget of $77,429,555, our expenditures year-to-date as of the end of November is $31,270,680. Our end-of-year projected expenses will be $75,632,498. At this point, this would leave an end-of-year available amount of $1,797,057. So, this is a projected end-of-year surplus for the end of the year. Some of the key line items that we talked about that were bouncing around included certified salaries, that's projected to run a little over, as well as unemployment and student transportation, however, due to other lines that are going to be under budget, leading to that current projected surplus. We also discussed grants for FY 24 and FY 25, with FY 25 being the primary focus. So, FY 25 Grants, the amount we applied for was $4,779,977. Awarded to date includes $3,384,915. We did also find out another grant had just been approved yesterday, so the awarded amount has creeped up a little bit closer to the applied-for amount. We did also spend some time discussing the FY 26 Budget Process that the Superintendent included partially in his EPS update, and we look forward to seeing that presented. So, at this time, that's all I have from Finance and Budget, pending any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Okay, Policy Committee.
Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, December 17th, at 5:30.
Okay. And Leadership Committee. We met last week, we discussed the agenda, we firmed up the presentation that we will be giving to the Town Council, hopefully, this coming Monday. We talked with Mr. Dag about the indoor air quality, and we went over current and future budget, so it was a productive meeting, and the next one is January 8th. Okay, and then Liaison Reports, Joint Facilities. We were supposed to have one this week, but it got canceled.
Yeah, so I have 12/26 on the calendar, and then the one after that would be January 23rd. Those are the next two I see scheduled.
Yeah, that's what I see, too, yep. But we did get an update in email that the application was submitted for Alcorn.
Yes.
Reimbursement, so we are on track on that. All right. JFK Building Committee.
I'll forward notes when I have them.
Okay. Joint Security Committee.
Next meets on this Friday, the 13th.
Yes, and now.
Chair, I just comment to Joint Security, the three sitting members include myself, Mr. Genitis, and Mr. Ryder, with Mr. Genitis leaving, I know we're going to have a vacancy on that, so I recommend we put a consent agenda item to fill that seat, so the board has full representation for Joint Security.
Okay. I don't, we don't really have to vote on, because we don't vote originally when people go on there, so I don't know if we're going to, I don't know if that's really, that we need that.
I believe by policy, we're, it's supposed to be like majority board action, but I believe if we post it and attach it to an agenda or something like that, it's kind of like a consent agenda item, as long as nobody objects, it would just go forward.
Okay, so we could put that on the next? Yeah. No? Current? Because I would like to go to the next meeting.
You can decide who you want to be on.
Yeah.
Just say, that's the person, and then I let the town.
Yeah, we choose our own liaise, so it would be anybody from your side.
We don't have to take formal action on it.
Okay.
Like you said, we don't need to do that.
All right, because we did already discuss in our caucus, and that I would be replacing Mr. Genitis on that.
Okay.
So, the permanent members would be.
So, I'll let them know tomorrow that you won't.
Yes. Beautiful. Great, so the permanent members will now be Mr. Coburn, Mr. Ryder, and myself for that committee.
I forget to save something for the newbie.
Well, they're going to, they'll have their fill, trust me. They're going to have their fill. All right. Enfield Mental Health Committee.
The next meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, December 11th, at 2:00 PM in Mr. Longy's office. Our guest speaker will be Amy Morales, presenting info for the support group of Circle of Security, and hopefully, its expansion for the kindergarten and grade-one students in our district.
Thank you. Enfield Culture and Arts. Do you have anything, Tina?
There's nothing to report.
Okay. I just wanted to add, the Joint Insurance Committee is meeting on December 17th at 3:00 PM. So, other school reports or updates? Anybody else? Sure, Dr. Callen?
Very briefly, nope, this is just a quick note from Eli Whitney. Couple things that didn't make it into Parent Square. Picture retakes are tomorrow, Wednesday, December 11th. Of course, Friday's PJ Day, and then next week, they're doing a Winter Spirit Week with HMS, so this is for HMS and Eli Whitney. Monday is Grinch Day, Tuesday is Deck the Halls Day, Wednesday is Winter Wonderland Day, Thursday is Sweater Day, and Friday is Polar Express. Also, a quick note from Eli Whitney's admins. We just wanted to apologize again, but due to the snow day last week, we unfortunately had to cancel the Whitney Winter Fest, so we'll be lighting our holiday trees during our school-wide holiday event taking place next Thursday, and everybody, Whitney wishes everybody a safe and happy winter break.
Dr. Callen?
Quick update for Kite. Kite's parent ambassadors will be at Winter Traditions on December 14th at Social Services. If you are interested in participating in the 2025 Heritage Fair, please reach out to Kite, the Kite Program Coordinator, Hannah Song, at H-S-O-N-G at enfield.org. The Parent Leadership Academy has been actively recruiting for Class 18 beginning this February. There are only a few spots left, so anyone interested in applying, please submit your applications soon to secure your seat. Applications can be found on the Kite website, enfieldkite.org, or by clicking on the post in Parent Square. With respect to Head Start, the Health Committee was supposed to meet last Thursday but was canceled due to the weather, and the meeting was rescheduled for January 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Callen. Anybody else? Ms. Akri?
From Crandall, Mr. Dupierre states, "We are currently in the middle of our 12 days before winter vacation spirit celebration. Students and staff enjoy taking part in having some fun and learning about holiday traditions and cultures around the world. Fifth-grade committee is looking for parent volunteers to help plan the end-of-year activities as they prepare to transition to middle school, so if you are interested, please contact the office for more information. And the deadline to order tickets for the Harlem Globetrotters is this Friday, December 13th. Please see the flyer in the newsletter with links to order the tickets. He wishes everyone a healthy and happy vacation, and see you in the new year." But I also would like to add that Crandall's virtual PTO meeting is December 17th at 6:00, and their Pride Assembly is on December 20th.
Thank you. Mr. Coburn?
All right, I'll do a quick shout-out to Henry Barnard and friends and family. A lot of the stuff actually mirrors Crandall with the PTO, because it's Barnard-Crandall PTO. I just want to note that they also do have some events coming up over winter break, so keep an eye out for those. And Henry Barnard is also in the midst of a 12-day spirit extravaganza, so if you don't have that information, check Parent Square for the themes that are recommended, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Moving on to Approval of Regular Board of Ed Meeting Minutes, November 26, 2024. Can I have a motion to approve?
So, moved.
Motion by Mr. Ryder. Seconded by Ms. Akri. Is there any discussion? Okay, can I have a show of hands in favor? There is. Nine in favor, none against.
Tina's hand up.
Yep, there you go. All right. Number 15, Approval of Accounts and Payroll, Mr. Coburn.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So the Finance Committee met on December 10th to review financial statements for the month of November year-to-date and examine various documents related to finances. Our review concluded nothing of significance to report to the board. Motion and a move, we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. Quote, "I hereby certify, in the month of November, total expenditures amount to $6,532,750.16, broken down between payroll totaling $4,510,73.53, and all other accounts totaling $2,022,676.63. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented," end quote, prepared by Lorraine Sisneros, Business Manager.
Motion made by Mr. Coburn.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ryder. Any discussion? Sensing none. A show of hands in favor. Nine in favor, none against. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, once again, the Finance Committee also met to discuss grant and Head Start expenditures. This motion is a move, we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. Quote, "I hereby certify, in the month of November, the total grant and Head Start expenditures amount to $514,107.33, broken down between payroll totaling $371,562.62, and other accounts totaling $169,544.41. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented," end quote, prepared by Lorraine Sisneros, Business Manager.
Motion made by Mr. Coburn, second by Mr. Ryder. Any discussion? Okay. Sensing none. Show of hands in favor. Nine in favor, none against.
And no further items for Item 15, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ryder, Correspondence and Board Communications?
Nothing that wasn't already included in our packet from Kathy.
Okay. Mr. Macchio, I see we have a matter related to personnel for executive session. Do you think that it will take more than 25 minutes?
I do not believe, I do not believe we require it. We put it on as a placeholder of a potential issue. We do not require it this evening.
Okay. So then, really, we just need a motion to adjourn, then?
So moved, second.
Second.
Amanda, you're welcome.
Motion made by Mr. Coburn, second by Ms. Pickett. All in favor? Nine in favor, none against. Happy holidays. Everybody be safe.